Good evening everyone and happy holidays. Thank you so much for joining us this evening. It's our last school board meeting for the 2018 school year. Hard to believe we'll be seeing each other back for 2019. We apologize for starting delayed, again dealing with important business with the division. So please accept our apologies. Without further ado, I would like to welcome Ms. Schaefer Shelton with us. She is our alternate rep to the board. She's standing in for Mr. Mitchell tonight and she will be leading us with our opening remarks.
Can pagers be turned to vibrate or turned off during the course of this meeting? Thank you. It has become a tradition to honor our nation at each of our board meetings by presenting the colors and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. The colors tonight are being presented by the Naval Junior ROTC Color Guard from Maury High School under the direction of Commander Ross Mobilia and Senior Chief Medina. Please rise and remain standing for the presentation of the colors and the reciting of the Pledge of Allegiance by the Maritime Rangers from Ocean View Elementary including Jaden Morgan, Amari Fielding, Molly Murphy, Arthur Chivers, Rebecca Moreno, and Jose Oriana. We will now have the presentation of our colors.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Order. Colors. Ready. Eyes. Right. Face. Heart. Arms. Forward. Arch. Colors to the hatch. Colors to the hatch.
Thank you. You may be seated.
Thank you very much. Dr. Peterson, hold on before you go. Tell us, tell us a little bit about the, it is, it is, it's the last day though. I just wanted to invite you to the podium to talk just a few minutes about the Maritime Program since, since the children were here to present and then we'll let you guys go since it is a school night.
Thank you. First on our list, thank you Board for having us tonight. We are very proud to bring our students here to present just a small fraction of our Maritime Ranger. We have a service-based program. Twenty years now, they have literally deposited about one and a half million oysters into the Chesapeake Bay. It's a service-based learning project where there are fifth graders do an application to become part of the program. They interview, they go through, they bring references and then we go through a little interview process to have them join the Maritime Rangers. The best part about their job as Maritime Rangers is we have oyster floats down at Nauticus that have been there since mid, late 90s and these fifth graders are in charge of them. They go down there about once a month, they weigh, they check the salinity of the water, they weigh the oysters, they check air pressure, things of that nature, they gauge the wind. And the best part is once they become experts at it, the other students follow them. So, once a month we'll send all of our first grade students, we'll send all of our second grade students and next month and our Maritime Rangers provide that education for the other students at Ocean View Elementary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Wonderful. Dr. Boone, Superintendent's Report.
Thank you to Ocean View. We appreciate you being here. And yes, the special number is one. Tomorrow morning it'll be zero. Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, members of the Board, ladies and gentlemen. It's always a pleasure each month to present a Superintendent's Report highlighting many of the great things that are going on in Norfolk Public Schools. I always express appreciation to our Communications Department and Channel 47 for the work that they do to bring together these highlights each month. So I'd ask Channel 47 to bring forth the Superintendent's Report.
Middle school students around the district observed International Computer Science Education Week by working with robots and different kinds of coding. At Northside Middle, students were building robots and writing code for them along with their 3D printer.
Today in class they are learning how to 3D print and they are actually learning code that they can print with a 3D printer. And I have some students using code to program robots. Some of the students are more advanced, the learning curve is different for each one. So as they progress, some of the students that are advanced actually move on and help the other ones that are struggling a little bit.
Right now we're working on coding to like make snowflakes, which I was talking about. Normally we just work on this stuff, but since it's the only week of code, we were working on that. It was a nice change of pace. I, it gave us a good break from this and I feel like everyone was like excited to try something different. And it's fun to be able to print out what you make on the computer and actually like have it in your hand.
Over at Rosemont, students worked with all kinds of robots, but focused primarily on programming their Lego robots to perform very specific commands. They competed against one another to see who could get their robot to execute the tasks the fastest.
They're having fun. A lot of times it, they don't really realize that they're learning because they are having fun as they're going through. They look at it as a game and it just keeps making them want to go the next step, the next level.
It's super fun and everything that we do in here, it's like, it seems like we're playing, but we're actually learning at the same time. So that's what I really like about it because you can have fun and learn at the same time.
Although they're having fun, these students are learning valuable skills that will help them not only with their education, but with future careers.
We have to prepare our students for today's careers and tomorrow's careers that are under, under consideration and not here yet. And if we don't do it this way and create that relevance between what they are learning and how they apply it, then our students will be behind the curve. So this is critically important.
This is helping me like be literate with technology. Like a year ago, I wasn't as literate with technology as I am now, but now I know how to like code, I know how to speak their language. So yeah, it will help me a lot. I think it's really cool because at my other schools, we didn't really have the technology and the money to do this, but since I'm here, it feels amazing.
In recognition of Take Your Legislator to School Day, the Norfolk Public School Board invited lawmakers from federal, state, and local governments to visit schools in the district and attend a luncheon to discuss legislative matters. The group began the morning with a tour of the Norfolk Technical Center before boarding buses and heading to other schools, including Lake Taylor High School and Laramore Elementary. The day was designed to build a rapport with legislators and show them firsthand what teaching and learning looks like in our schools every day.
Well, I think this goes along with our relationship building with the local, the local level and our state delegates that, that they understand when we're having these conversations, they can come here and, and actually see what we're talking about, see our need and also see the many successes that are going on in our schools and things that we should be proud of.
I think a lot of times you hear so many things in the paper, news, stories about what's happening in our public schools, but honestly, there's nothing like being in and watching and walking through the hallways and interacting with our students and our teachers and our staff members to really see what public education is and how we're offering it. And, and also how they can be a better partner and how we can offer better things to make sure that we have the best educational experience for our students.
Well, what I've seen, a lot of dedicated professionals doing a great job with limited resources. And so that's a issue that's come into a lot of discussion lately in Richmond, particularly our infrastructure about schools and what we need to do. A lot of unfulfilled needs across the Commonwealth, particularly in the city of Norfolk. So interesting to see how they really are doing a great job, again with limited resources.
I think it was fantastic, you know, to see the students in their element is wonderful for me and it takes me back to when I was in high school and I wish I could trade places with them, but unfortunately now I can have a little bit of an impact at the state level and we'll do all that we can to make sure that Norfolk Public Schools are getting everything that they need.
Students, staff, and community members celebrated Terrleton Elementary's Purple Star designation at a special ceremony in December. During the assembly, military-connected students were recognized for artwork and essays about their experiences and there were also musical performances. The designation, which was given to only 59 schools across the state, is awarded to schools who demonstrate a major commitment to their military-connected students.
Terrleton won this award because of the Welcome Club. I think that the, the Welcome Club, the activities that they displayed, the, the kind of support that was evident that the kids were giving one another really stood out and it serves as a model for other schools. If you really want to win the Purple Star Designation for your schools in the coming years, you're going to have to step it up a notch and get your kids to support one another the way that the Tigers do here at Terrleton.
It was a great feeling of accomplishment and it really is a culmination of a lot of efforts that we've had here at the school to make sure that our military families feel supported and it's a visible sign and seal, if you will, on, on that commitment that we have that we can show parents that we really are a military-supported school and community.
It means a lot because we work very hard to support our military-connected students and to have that recognized just, it makes me proud. It makes me proud that our hard work is recognized, the staff and the students and everybody and that we're doing something really for our, our military-connected kids who give so much and, and their families and we, we really love supporting them. It's important to us.
The Office of Academic Rigor had a great turnout for their parent night at Granby High School. This valuable workshop provided an overview of the programs and services offered to gifted students and a gallery walk with a variety of tables, each featuring a different topic.
It's been a while since the Office of Academic Rigor had done a parent workshop, so we just wanted to invite the parents out to meet some of the gifted resource teachers and to, you know, give them more information about different topics related to gifted education. We've had a good turnout, especially for this time of year.
Our son is a gifted, has been designated as a gifted student and I wanted to find out if we were challenging him in every way that we could. We want to get a head start on the SAT. I wanted to get some SAT and ACT information tonight. Even though he's only in the ninth grade, it's never too soon to start working on these things.
I definitely found a lot of information. It has great programs that weren't offered when I was here, so they have new programs, a lot of good collegiate prep programs, a lot of stuff on how parents can help students at home and we can further our kids' education. Really good.
I found a lot of great information. I was actually pleasantly surprised. There were some interesting tables about different things that we deal with, with our children, about perfectionism, about, you know, how the brain is shaped and so that was really nice and also learned about some resources and programming. So it's been a good night. I'm glad I came out.
The school board held a special recognition ceremony at Lake Taylor High School that featured outstanding students from across the district. Following the presentation of colors and singing of the National Anthem by Lake Taylor students, approximately 50 certificates were handed out in the categories of Academics, Arts, and Athletics. Congratulations to all those who were recognized. Central Administration got into the holiday spirit with a festive gathering that included games, dancing, and a special luncheon. Departments also competed in a door decorating contest with the Athletics Department winning first place with Rudolph the Red-Nosed Reindeer on crutches, followed by assessment, research, and accountability's Dr. Seuss theme that took second place. And the Communications Department came in third place with Santa's Naughty or Nice List. For more news, stories, and other information about Norfolk Public Schools, watch NPS Now on WNS TV 47 or the NPS website.
And before I conclude the Superintendent's Report, I want to wish everyone a great break, great holiday season. Rest, relax, because the New Year's coming and we're going to continue our very strong efforts as we improve the outcomes for our students in this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Boone. We're going to do a slight adjustment to our agenda and move the musical selection for this evening up to go ahead of the Deputy Clerk's report. So without further ado, our musical performance for this evening. And tonight we're being joined by the Norview Men's Chorus, Norview High School.
[Music]
[Music]
So, good evening. My name is Ms. Tillman. I am the choral director at Norview High School. So in front of you, well, earlier, a few minutes ago, you heard some of our gentlemen at Norview High School, they're in the chorus. We have about 15 in the mixed ensemble and a class of about 33. And we have about 33 in the regular beginning entry level men's ensemble. We probably have one of the largest programs in the region. So they're fabulous and I thought I would share them with you tonight. And what we did beforehand is we went out to dinner together and we worked on etiquette and eating out in public and they had wonderful fellowship and I think my colleague, Mr. Moore, who joined me in chaperoning and drumming and also helping me with that fellowship part of that. So yeah, that's, that's what you heard tonight. We had the Men of the Chorus, which they choreographed, that was not only me. And then you heard a Nigerian carol, Betel Hemu. Thank you. Thank you for having us.
You. Butts, Deputy Clerk's Report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Originally I was going to sing my report, but considering we get to the professionals. But I want to, along with our custom, if we can have the school board members and Superintendent go up towards the front of the dais. Now, one of the things that makes our district such a cornerstone and a diverse community is that we pride ourselves on having such great community partners. And so tonight, excuse me, we're going to look, I guess, honor some of those who participated in a beautification project in one of our elementary schools. So if it's so kind to also invite the principal of J Cox Elementary, Dr. Lucy Litchmore, to come help join in recognizing our four recipients tonight. So the project that took place over the summer was a beautification project over at J Cox Elementary School. Now, I understand there were some 200 volunteers that participated in various forms of beautification, be it inside the building and outside the building. Now, we would like to have invited all 200 here, space limits. We decided to just kind of have some of our, our main coordinators of that event, of the beautification project. So those tonight that we have in attendance, again, just represent the large many. We have first Ms. Nicole Vasquez. Ms. Vasquez is representing the Junior League and the Thrive Young Professionals. We also have Ms. Julian Goodwin, who's representing Thrive Young Professionals. Next is Ms. Tiffany Williams, representing Junior League of Norfolk, Virginia Beach. We also have Dr. Antipas Harris, who's with the Urban Renewal Center. Dr. Gabriel and Board Members, that ends my report.
You can slide in a little more, maybe two lines. Yep, that's perfect. Thank you.
All right. Good evening and thanks for having me here, Board. So Project Makeover was definitely a huge project and we were so happy that we were selected, J Cox Elementary School, that we were selected to take on this, this vastness. And you know, we wanted our students to walk into the school and we wanted them to feel loved. We wanted them to feel appreciated. We wanted our teachers to come in and feel loved and appreciated. And when they came and we did a gallery walk and we heard the ahs and the oohs. So it is something that is greatly appreciated. We make reference to it often because the artwork is phenomenal. So Board members, members of the audience, if you have not made it out to 1300 Marshall Avenue, please do not come tomorrow. However, you know, make a trip out just to see the beautification project that was done to our school for our children. So again, thank you.
Thank you. We certainly do appreciate all of our community partners here at Norfolk Public Schools. Moving on the agenda, we have the second readings of policies, KGBZ and KG CZ. As you know, these were policies that were brought forth to the Board for consideration by two very special young ladies at Granby High School. We applaud them for their efforts. We had a first reading about a month ago and our second- We had a first reading about a month ago, and our second reading is tonight. I would like to open the floor to board members if they have any questions or concerns about the policies set before us. Ms. Campson?
I don't have any questions or concerns. I'd just like to, once again, say how impressed we are that two students brought this policy to the policy committee, now to the whole board. And are we voting tonight?
We'll be voting tonight.
Voting tonight. I'm very impressed. Ladies, you did a great job.
Mr. Butts, did you receive any other comment, additional comment, to the policies before us?
No, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
I'm going to hold the thought that I was going to say on that one. But, okay. So, then, these two policies will be up for vote tonight. They will not be on the consent agenda. They will be voted on separately. But we do look forward to voting on these items. And we thank you very much for being here and for spearheading the effort to make our school a better place through your voice. Thank you. Next, on to item four point oh seven, the district audit report. Dr. Boone?
Thank you. Annually, the school board is required to conduct an independent audit, and our audit process is done in conjunction with the city's audit. This year, we are very pleased to introduce our new auditors. And I know Ms. Ingram is going to join and probably take care of those introductions. But we're actually working with a new firm. The audit process was bid last year, and a new firm was selected for the city and thus the schools. So, I'll let Ms. Ingram take care of the introductions.
Good evening, Dr. Gabriel, school board members, Dr. Boone. I would like to introduce to the school board tonight, who will be giving the audit report. Like Dr. Boone said, each year, we have an audit, and we have a new firm this year. And tonight, presenting the findings, not findings, sorry, presenting the results of their audit today, what they have been going through this year. They also presented to the audit committee on December the tenth, where Ms. Campson and Ms. Smith was part of the audit committee. So, Ms. Aries Coleman, who is the engagement director at Clifton, Larson, Allen, who headed up the audit here for Norfolk, will be presenting to you the results of those. So, I'm going to turn it over to Aries.
Thank you very much. I'm not sure this is my presentation. Do I have a clicker? Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to present. As Ms. Ingram spoke, we are the new auditors for the district, and want to give a great thank you to Ms. Ingram and Mr. Reyes and the finance team. Any new audit, new audit process has its challenges, but they were very helpful, very knowledgeable in the transition, and very well. So, as mentioned, I'm here to present the results for the 2018 CAFR. I'll give a brief overview, the CAFR opinion. We looked at two federal programs as part of the process, and also did some procedures over student activity funds, and then I will end what's required communications that we have to do with governance. So, the opinion on the audit for the CAFR is unmodified. An unmodified opinion is the highest assurance that we can give as an independent auditor, which means there were no material adjustments, misstatements. It's the best that you can get as far as an opinion. We also required understanders to issue a report on internal controls over financial reporting. With that report, we look at the control process surrounding the financial reporting process. There were no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies found in that process. As I mentioned before, the district is required to participate in the single audit. The single audit report is actually part of the city's CAFR, but the district being a part of the component, the component unit of the city, certain programs of the district are reviewed each year as part of the audit process. For fiscal year 2018, Title I and Special Education programs were reviewed in accordance with Uniform Guidance. A report will be issued on compliance with each major program in accordance with federal compliance requirements, and there were no findings cited for either program. Lastly, is the Student Activity Funds, which are the funds that are maintained by each individual schools. We did agreed upon procedures for them for 2018, and that is limited procedures that the schools, the district, agreed to for us to look at cash receipts and cash disbursement process or selected transactions. We visited twenty-six schools, and the makeup of those schools were twelve elementary schools, seven middle schools, five high schools, Granby High School, the evening school, as well as Norfolk Technical Schools. Okay. Lastly, I would like to go over some required communications with governance that we are required to make as part of the audit process. As I mentioned, the audit that we did was in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. It's also known as GAS. You'll hear that often. And that is in accordance with GAAP, which is generally accepted accounting principles. For qualitative aspects of the accounting principles, and it's basically the underlining, the underlining principles that the financial report, the CAFR, is built on, we ask you to look at note one in the financial statements. And what they will do is give you a brief overview under each, for each line item in the financial statements, give you a brief overview of the basis of how those numbers were determined. For fiscal year 2018, all government entities were subject to implementing GASB seventy-five. This is similar to sixty-eight with the pensions, where the liability was reported on the financial statements. Seventy-five is the OPEP, which is your post-employment benefits other than pensions. The liability, the net liability required related to that item had to be recorded on your statement of net assets. When we look at the financial statements, there are some of the items that are estimates. Some numbers are hard numbers. Some numbers are estimates where the district may get a third party, such as actuaries, to take a, it's kind of an estimate, and look at the activities surrounding this particular item and determine what the value is. And that item is booked on your financial statements as a particular number, but is not backed with a, I guess I would always say like a receipt. You see a receipt, you have a number, that's what the number is. An estimate is kind of the best guess that the actuary can determine based on the assumptions that they use. So, when you look at GASB sixty-eight, I've mentioned, was your net pension liability, GASB seventy-five, which is your, the net OPEP disclosures, depreciation of life related to the capital assets, and in your IBNR, which is your claims for workman's comp and your liability. The health insurance is also included, but the health insurance is on the city's CAFR. But those numbers are, we consider, as an estimate. When we review the underlying assumptions to determine those estimates, we assess that they were reasonable based on the judgments and estimates that management presented to us. There is no sensitivity, sensitive information disclosed in the financial statements. We did not encounter any difficulties or disagreements with management. Management will be required to sign a representation letter stating that all the information they presented to us to review and complete the audit was accurate and reasonable to the best of their knowledge. Management did not consult with any other accountants. Basically, when we, they only used us as their auditor. They did not have a particular issue where they went and spoke with other accountants about that matter. And management did not discuss any issues with us before retaining us this year as their auditors. There were no other significant issues or findings noted that were not previously discussed with the audit committee. And as Ms. Ingram noted, there were no findings at all. And that the information contained in the audited financial statements, we have supplemental and required supplemental information, and this is part of financial reporting practices. For this information, we do not express an opinion. So, when I spoke about the modified opinion, that's related just to the financial statements prepared by management. For the supplemental and the required supplemental information that's going to support the financial statements, we're required to look at it and make sure it agrees with the financial statements that we are presenting our opinion on. But we did not audit this information. So, again, thank you very much, and happy holidays. Any questions?
Again, thank you all so much for the work. And I, too, want to join in and thank Ms. Ingram and Mr. Reyes, and is Brandon here tonight?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And the accounting team. You know, building a successful team is important to be able to drive the types of results that we've received this evening. So, it is important to have the right people in the right seat on the bus at the right time. And so, I'm very appreciative of that. And it was very good, a lot of pleasure to work with you all. And don't know, Dr. Gabriel, if you want to ask for comments from any of the audit committee members?
I was. I was planning to do that. So, Ms. Campson and Ms. Smith serve on the audit committee, and I was going to ask if you all had some comments to make on the report and working together as a team on this effort?
Well, I'd just like to say congratulations to Ms. Ingram, because it was obviously very well organized. Everyone knew exactly what they were saying. I mean, it was very impressive. As you know, I'm not a CPA. But I was impressed, and I was impressed with our new auditors, too.
Thank you very much.
It was a very, the meeting went very smoothly, and I learned a lot. So, thank you.
And I would like to commend Dr. Ingram and her staff regarding the results of the audit report. Like the auditor said, it's the highest opinion one can get. There's none better than that. So, it is a testament to the quality of work and the fiscal responsibility that is exercised within your department. And it also speaks to the usefulness of the information, meaning anyone who picks this information up based on that opinion knows that it is useful, and they can make informed decisions on that information. So, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, I was going to get to other board comments.
Yeah. I just want to ask if, just so I make sure I'm understanding, the major programs, Title I and Special Ed, can you just state for me again the significance of the no findings here, in particular, as it relates to those two programs?
Sure, sure. So, for those two, they are audited in accordance with federal requirements, because they are federal funds. And each year, the federal government, under Uniform Guidance, has a specific criteria that they want the auditors to look at and determine if the programs were compliant. And the big piece with those programs is, any, is how you spend your funds, that is allowable cost. So, when we're saying that we had no findings, and allowable costs is one of the big areas that we're looking at, that's kind of what we're saying. We applied the procedures that, under Uniform Guidance, there were no findings for those, with those related criteria.
So, to Dr. Boone and Ms. Ingram and your team of Title I and Special Ed, as a school board member who has lived through some other questions around these programs in the past to get these no findings, I mean, I'm smiling, because I just think the work that you all have done is tremendous. And I think it's something we really need to make sure is understood by the community and everyone involved about the great work here and what this means for Norfolk Public Schools with these two programs.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to citizen comments on agenda and non-agenda items. We welcome you to come to the podium and express your thoughts. Please come to the podium. It can be adjusted to suit your height. State your name and whether or not you have a child in Norfolk Public Schools, or if you are employed by the system. Please state your position and give facts and other relevant data. If you represent a group or organization, ask the others to rise and be recognized. And please give any written statements or supporting material to the clerk for record. Speakers are limited to a one-time appearance of three minutes. When the clerk signals that your time is up, please quickly end your comments and be seated. The school board does not respond to citizen remarks at the time that they are given. Mr. Butts, please proceed.
We have a total of six speakers. Our first being Whitney Davis, to be followed by Philip Hawkins, Jr.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, members of the board. My name is Whitney Davis. I have a first grader at Larchmont Elementary and a daughter who'll be entering kindergarten next year. I'm a graduate of Norfolk Public Schools and a kindergarten teacher. I taught at a Title I school in Harlem in New York, and I taught kindergarten in Hong Kong, China. I've recently founded the Norfolk chapter of the larger group More Recession for Virginians, and I'm here tonight to talk to you about recess in our schools. One of the first things I heard when I moved back to the U.S. from Hong Kong was that U.S. education was trying to be more like the Asian model. Having just taught in Asia, I was concerned about what this meant for elementary education. In Hong Kong, I saw a society of young children who didn't have enough playtime and whose critical thinking and gross and fine motor skills were suffering for it. They were so academically focused from the start that play fell by the wayside. Why is this a problem? Because aside from being a necessary physical outlet, free play is a natural and essential way for a child to learn. We might think of play simply as a physical activity or a way for kids to blow off steam, but there's more to it than that. Free, unstructured play allows children to figure out and process new concepts and ideas through role play and explorative behavior. Though play is a break from direct instruction, the learning continues. Moreover, play provides a specific type of learning environment in which children are the initiators and leaders, and can develop social skills like cooperation, self-control, and problem solving. There's an abundance of research indicating that play is a crucial part of childhood development, that it boosts cognitive skills and leads to, rather than detracts from, greater academic performance. Still, somehow, it is not a priority in our schools. As a teacher, watching my students play was so incredibly informative. Formal assessments have their place, but when I watched my kids play, I learned about their character, their leadership skills, and their relationships with other children. And I got a more full picture of who they were and how they were doing. I'm here tonight as a concerned teacher and a Norfolk native, but I'm here first and foremost as a mom. Though I liked my daughter's school and her teacher, I was so incredibly disappointed by the amount of time that she had to play and be creative in kindergarten. My five-year-old had fifteen minutes to play at the last period of the day, so she did not go out until three o'clock. She came home frustrated to the point of tears, telling me they just won't let us play. This year, she has twenty minutes of recess, but it's still not enough. I had a child who was excited about learning, excited about school, and I feel that Norfolk Public Schools sucked that enthusiasm out of her. This isn't right. It's not good for our kids. It doesn't make them better students or better citizens. And quite frankly, it's the wrong way to approach childhood education. We have a law that gives us a chance to do better. We need to implement the fifty minutes we're allowed. We need to restructure the schedule to accommodate a morning and an afternoon recess, and we need to do better. Thank you.
Good evening. Dr. Gabriel, members of the Norfolk School Board, Dr. Boone, leadership staff, and guests here tonight. My name is Philip Hawkins, Jr., and I reside at thirty-five ninety-seven Mississippi Avenue. I am the president of the Education Association of Norfolk, also a pre-kindergarten four teacher at the PB Young Senior Elementary School. First of all, I would like to say season's greetings to all of the board members, and I want to thank all of you and our leadership staff and the employees, all of our students. I want to wish them a wonderful holiday season as we prepare to enter our winter break. And thank you for your service, and thank you for all that you do for us every day. Tonight, I just wanted to come to the table to just give an update. I want to thank the board and the administration for allowing us to be at the table. We have been working with the educational planning process for Norfolk Public Schools, and much of the discussion tonight dealt with where we are going. And we want to make sure that we get this right for our district and for our students. So, I would like to thank you all for ensuring that we're going to have staff engagement in the upcoming sessions of 2019 as we prepare to determine what is the best strategy for all of our schools in the entire city. So, with that said... So with that said, I definitely look forward to having all of those discussions with staff because we need to have their voice at the table so that they're aware of what is pending to happen potentially, but not the final outcome until much discussion has taken place. Also, I would like to, this is because the educational process deals with budget, we definitely have to take that conversation to our federal, state, and local leaders. And so that is what we are planning to do in the Education Association of Norfolk and VEA. We are planning to have a statewide rally on January 28th. And of course, I love all of the holiday red for Ed. That's what I'm wearing today. We had the Polar Express. I see it, yes. Thank you, thank you. We have to keep this momentum going, and that is precisely why we are marching. It will be a rally for our future because we know education is our future. And so we're calling on all of our stakeholders in the community to join us in that effort. No matter what group you come from, we want to speak from one voice on that day and continue those conversations with our other local leaders because we know budget doesn't end with this group, but we have to continue that conversation. So again, thank you, and happy holidays to all of you. And I look forward to working with all of you in the days to come. And thank you.
Next, we have Vicki Greco, followed by Zarian and Zariel Anthony.
Good evening, Dr. Boone, Dr. Gabriel, school board and leadership team members, Ms. Shelton, and fellow stakeholders. My name is Vicki Manugo-Greco. I'm an NPS graduate, former speech-language pathologist, current volunteer on two advisory committees, and grateful parent of three secondary ed students in the school division that gave me and my six siblings, who are all graduates of Lake Taylor High, the great start to our higher ed and career paths. Thankfully for us, NPS has always championed great career and technical ed before it even became a buzzword. So tonight, I'm here on behalf of my large immigrant Filipino-American family to first thank NPS, our diverse city's cornerstone, for the returns on educational investment that were afforded to us. It's my New Year's wish that other stakeholders, who are also a big part of the NPS family, that they also become more engaged and lend their voices to stand together for community reinvestment priorities as we enter another season of NPS budget planning and legislative advocacy. And in the season of giving, this wonderful time of the year that's meant for children, I'm here to also give thanks and reminders to our school board leaders whose jobs are demanding because we, citizen bosses, expect our school board members to do their homework and schoolwork on top of their full-time jobs and also to be held accountable for their collective leadership decisions that are to be made in the best interests of our children. As a school community, we will be asked to embrace positive change as we all consider and deliberate what later start times to the school day will mean for our high schoolers and their families, as well as the impact of earlier start times for our elementary schoolers and their families. Families meaning parents, siblings, parents, siblings, grandparents, teachers, school staff, bus drivers, and crossing guards. We grown-ups should look forward to the opportunity of going back to school at the start of 2019 to be part of the productive community conversations that NPS will hold in January around rethinking and advocating for what is actually best for all of our learners, including financial and human resources to support student needs, especially mental health supports and safe and healthy learning environments. Likewise, the public ed faithful like Norfolk Gains, growing and investing in Norfolk Schools, and our PTAs will continue to travel to Richmond in January and advocate among our General Assembly representatives for legislation, policies, and funding that aim to pay competitively, recruit effectively, and keep as long as we can our good teachers, especially in high-poverty schools and hard-to-fill positions. So to these ends, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, Ms. Campson, Ms. Martin, Ms. Smith, Ms. Basine, and Mr. Jordan, please collectively demonstrate to us, your fellow investors in our school system, the eight critical traits of an effective school board, which include high expectations, accountability, data-driven continuous improvement, aligned and sustained use of resources, teamwork development, team collaboration with Dr. Boone, authentic collaboration with staff and the community, and shared vision and goals for our students to be successful lifelong learners. I thank you, and happiest of holidays to you and yours.
Hi, my name is Zariel Anthony, and I'm a senior from Granby High School.
And my name is Zariel Anthony, and I'm also a senior at Granby High School. And today, we are here as members of Y Street. Y Street is the award-winning youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. You may remember us from past school board meetings we've attended where we proposed updating the policies and our attendance during the first reading to answer any potential questions. Tonight, we are here to congratulate and thank you for your partnership with us and to celebrate the work that has been done so that our division policies can become 100% tobacco and e-cigarette-free. We are so excited to see the changes that were made, such as extending the definition of property to include on- and off-site events, whether owned, leased, or chartered by the division; updating your definition of tobacco policies to include alternative products like electronic smoking devices and other products containing nicotine; and adding a provision to provide cessation resources to students and staff who are working to overcome tobacco addiction. Updating the language in our community policies helps to streamline communication across all division tobacco policies, including the ones for students and staff. With these updates, you have shown a strong and consistent commitment to the health of our school community, and you will serve as an example to encourage other school divisions nearby to do the same.
We are standing in front of you today to say thank you. Thank you for putting the health and safety of your staff, students, and visitors first by doing everything you can to have 100% tobacco-free school environments 24 hours a day, seven days a week. I am glad the adoption of this policy will have a beneficial impact on my fellow peers. We are asking all of you to please vote yes to this very important policy update. Once you adopt a new policy, making our schools 100% comprehensively tobacco-free, the 24/7 campaign has great ways to support the implementation and enforcement of the new policy. First, we will provide free tobacco-free signage to all schools in our school division. Second, our free tobacco and e-cigarette-free toolkit will be sent to all schools in our division. Third, we will add you to the official map of 100% comprehensive Virginia divisions on our handouts and website. Finally, middle and high schools in our division can participate in Tobacco-Free Spirit Day, a day of celebration for those comprehensive divisions. We look forward to helping our school divisions put up the signs, get the word out, and continue to promote the awareness of the policy updates through our division. On behalf of Zariel, myself, and Y Street, thank you for listening to what youth in your division have to say. We are honored to be here tonight to recognize our division, Norfolk City Public Schools, for adopting a new 100% comprehensive policy and being the 38th division to do so across the state. Thank you.
Our final two speakers are Kathy Rust, to be followed by Thomas Calhoun.
Hi. Thank you for, my name is Kathy Rust. I'm a parent of two students at Maury High School. And I've been an instructor at the Governor's School for the Arts, so I've had experience teaching high schoolers. And this is my first school board meeting. I was so excited to see the issue of school start times on the ticker of the news this morning that it compelled me to come. So this has been really exciting. I just wanted to say that I am here to just give one person's support, one parent's support, in changing the school start times. As an educator, I have definitely seen tired kids on the other side of the desk. And we all know that we're struggling to find instructional time and be as effective as we can. And having motivated students who are tired and can't keep their attention is really frustrating for all of us. So learners that are awake and can use their motivation are gonna be utilizing the effectiveness of the teachers to their most advantage. As a parent, I'd like to say that just if one kid can be benefited by the change in the start time, the whole district will benefit. I've had a personal experience with a doctor saying to me, as a parent, you need to have your kid go to school later. Your kid needs, for their own health and well-being, need to get more rest. And I commend Maury High School, staff, counselors, teachers, everyone who worked with me as a parent to accommodate my student and the change in the schedule. But it shouldn't have to be an exception. And I know that just one student could benefit, and that would be, it would be a benefit to all students. It's not just my student. So I applaud you for looking at the current research. You guys are, it was amazing for me as a parent to say, NPS is looking at the most current research. It speaks for itself. We know what our students need developmentally. And thank you for looking into it, and I give you Godspeed in working through the logistics. Thank you.
Madam Chair, my name is Thomas Calhoun, and I am president of the Norfolk Federation of Teachers. I'm here tonight because I was out of town on November 28th when you all had your work session. I was watching it on television, and then all of a sudden, I saw Ms. Campson waving her hands around in the air, saying weird things like, "Reconstitute the whole school." Poverty ain't no deterrent for education. That's original. And I was wondering what the world was going on. I didn't know what she was okay with. And she said, "Do something bold, do something bold." I don't know what that was all about. But this "do something bold" thing been in my head ever since she waved her hand and said, "Do something bold", like reconstitute the whole school. I got another bold idea. This is my idea of bold, and I just thought I would present it to you tonight. These people who know so much about educating our high-poverty, low-achieving schools don't ever seen the work in them. So my idea of doing something bold would, let's take our most celebrated principals and put them in these low-achieving schools they so concerned about, you know, instead of putting them down here like we do. Why don't we let, why don't some of them volunteer? Some of our most celebrated principals volunteer to go to some of these schools with 100% high poverty. You know, they do that in some cities, you know? Yeah, they put their best principals in their lowest-performing schools. So I mean, while we doing something bold, why don't we ask for our top teachers to go to some of these lowest-performing schools? That would be bold. I've seen them leave rather than go. I've seen principals threaten to resign rather than go to these schools. I've seen them blame these neighborhoods after y'all rezoned some of them for their low scores. I've seen them do everything. You remember the Christbaum saying, Lena, I'm sure, Madam Chair? Y'all reason that to Blair. I've seen everything in this system. But these people who know everything about educating these high-poverty schools go in them and put their reputation and expertise where their mouth is. Never seen that. I'm just an idea for the board. Why don't we put these people who keep telling us how to do this? Why don't we send them to some of these schools and let them show us? Just my thought of doing something bold. I'd like to make a correction if I can, Madam Chair. My colleague mentioned a rally, a march, in January 28th. I told the governor this two weeks ago, and I told some delegates this. And I want you guys to know, too. I've told a couple of school board members this. Virginia Educators United has a website, Facebook, Twitter. You all need to be very aware. We are having a rally. It begins at 11:00 in Monroe Park on January 28th. We're gonna march to the Capitol, the bell tower, and join VEA at a rally at 12:00. We have buses coming from all over the state. We've been involved since May. I just want you guys to know this because we fighting for money from the state for you guys, too. We've been doing this since May. I'm on the State Planning Committee with Virginia Educators United. You need to look that up because you will be hearing from them. And all of us, and I'm hoping a lot of people in this room join us.
Madam Chair, we actually have an additional five speakers who have asked to give comments. We have Mr. Matthew Winston, to be followed by Janine Brown.
Good evening, Chairwoman Gabriel, Dr. Boone, distinguished school board members. My name is Matt Winston. We have two children attending Norfolk Public Schools, so I'm a parent and citizen. It's also the first opportunity that I've had to present to this distinguished board, and I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank you for what you do. You have the same personal and professional responsibilities that all of we have, and yet you take this extra effort to commit your time to this. And for that, we're very grateful. Thank you. The thing I'd like to address this evening, if I may, is the issue of school start times. And I think this has eloquently been presented this evening, so I'll try to keep my comments brief. I'd like to mention a couple of facts that might be material to your considerations. One is that according to the American Academy of Pediatrics, they have recommended that middle and high schools start at 8:30 a.m. or later to give students the amount of sleep that they need. And according to the Pediatrics Sleep Duration Consensus, which recommends that teenagers aged 13 to 18 years old should regularly sleep 10 to 8 hours per day for good health, and that adolescents who do not get enough sleep are more likely to be overweight, to not engage in daily physical activity, to suffer from symptoms of depression, to engage in unhealthy risk behaviors such as drinking, smoking tobacco, and using illicit drugs, and to perform poorly in school. And I know that most of your time is dedicated towards an allocation of resources that will get you the best results. But given that these students, our students, are our greatest resource, I would ask you to avoid deferring this discussion and make a decision, and the right decision, as soon as possible to give our students, all of our students, the best opportunity that they can have to learn. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Boone, school board members, and everyone here tonight. I am Janine Brown. I'm a proud mother of two students, one of which is sitting right there, who graduated from Granby High School last year in the IB program and has survived her first semester of college. And I have a 10th grader at Maury High School. I'm here to briefly echo the sentiments that you've heard from two other folks tonight regarding school start times. I'm not only a parent, I'm also a nurse practitioner, and I take care of folks here in our community. I see a lot of students in the teenage years. I see folks in the high school and the college years, and I see a lot of medical issues like anxiety, sleep deprivation, depression, and the like. We all know what's been presented and what the facts are. We know what the American Academy of Pediatrics recommends. We know about school systems in our country that have implemented the later school start times for high schoolers and have shown improved academic performance. So we know the data is solid. And I ask you to strongly consider doing the hard thing, which is to make that change and to make that as soon as possible. My daughter, Morgan, who graduated with a greater-than-4O GPA, was chronically sleep-deprived for all four years of high school. She frequently came home and had to take She frequently came home and had to take naps after school, just to be able to get through the amount of homework and the rigorous amount of academic things that she had to do every single day. I will tell you that my daughter Sydney, who's 16, takes melatonin every single night. Why? Because her circadian rhythms, being a teenager, don't want her to go to sleep at 8:30 at night, which is what she has to do in order to be able to get up at 6:30 in the morning. So she forces herself to take her shower and to take melatonin every evening so that she can go to sleep at a reasonable time and actually get close to that 10 hours of rest. Morgan didn't have that luxury, because IB wouldn't allow her to sleep 10 hours a night and get the work done. So those are just two examples. Plus, the people I see in my professional life as teenagers and beyond who have all kinds of issues because of sleep deprivation. And we know that sleep deprivation affects people's ability and reaction times, as well as their decision-making, and we know that it impacts their educational performance. So I thank you for all that you do, because Norfolk Public Schools is a terrific school system, and I'm proud that my girls have been a part of it. But please let them sleep longer. Thank you.
We now have Morgan Brown, followed by Dr. Scott Atkins and Dr. Paul Gibney.
Hi, my name is Morgan, and I'm a recent graduate from Granby High School. And yes, from what my mom said, I was chronically sleep-deprived during high school. I was constantly having to get up really early in the morning to catch the bus for my freshman and sophomore year, and go to bed really late. IB caused me to do a lot of work, and to be able to do that, I had to take naps, and I had to go to bed, or had to go to bed late. And it was hard. And on average, per week, I think I got maybe six hours per night. It was not good, and they recommend that I get eight to 10 hours. So I was constantly battling with that, not only just my education, but with my health. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. My name is Paul Gibney. I'm a board-certified emergency physician. I'm really just here to stop Scott from talking past three minutes.
I just told him I can't get my phone number unless in three minutes.
So, but, but really, everybody's done a great job, and we're essentially here to talk to the, pushing the school start times back and endorse that. As an emergency physician, familiar with the literature, would reiterate that, you know, the American Academy of Pediatric stands, the American Academy of Sleep Medicine, everything that's been said is, is really, is evidence-based science, and, and I highly recommend that, and I really appreciate the board's considering that. And I'll defer to Dr. Atkins, who's a developmental pediatrician who deals with this on a regular basis.
Yeah, over the last 10 years or so, I've seen more and more children coming in for anxiety, depression, high-school-aged children. What we typically see is children in a cycle of being behind in homework, the kind of academic load that was just described, staying up later, getting up earlier, needing more sleep deprived. What the evidence shows is that at eight hours of sleep, test scores, eight to 10, are what you're gonna, gonna get, peaked. For every 15-minute increment we go down below your sleep need, test scores drop. So at seven hours and 45 minutes, you do worse. At seven and a half, you do worse. At seven, you do worse. But it's really hard to get out of that cycle for, for many of the kids that, that start later. We also know that, that circadian rhythms in adolescents, right, that, that the sleep time, preferred sleep time is 11:00 p.m. So if we're going to sleep at 8:30, it's no surprise that you would have to take melatonin to do that. So I, the points were so beautifully made before, I know the school board has the students' best interest in mind, and I just wanted to close by reading the American Academy of Pediatric Statement, which just says that chronic sleep loss in children and adolescents is one of the most common and easily fixable public health issues in the U.S. today. I don't know how easily fixable it is when you start moving bus schedules around and everything, but the research is clear that adolescents who get enough sleep have reduced risk of being in automobile accidents, suffering depression, obesity, and that grades go up and standardized test scores go up. So, thank you.
Madam Chair, based on my speaker list, sign-up list, that concludes our comments for the night.
Are there any other members that are wishing to speak tonight? That then close the public comment portion of the agenda tonight. We are going to move forward with the consent agenda. There, there are two items that need to be pulled from the consent agenda docket that will be voted on separately, and those are two personnel items. Mr. Cloud, I'm just gonna get your assistance on this. Do I need to list the positions that we're pulling?
I don't think so. I've informed the clerk what the two items are.
Okay.
He's aware of what the, what separated out for the vote.
Thank you very much. So what I would like to have on the floor at this time is a motion to approve the amended consent agenda with the removal of the two positions. It's been moved, is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye.
The consent agenda is approved. Moving on to the decisions and discussion agenda, we are going to have forth on item 6.01, the monthly financial report.
Thank you. As Ms. Ingram makes her way, this is our monthly financial report to the board, and I think, based on the earlier report of the Audit Committee, again exemplifies the, the value of these monthly presentations, as well as the quality and the, the hard work that goes in to make sure we get an unmodified opinion. So again, I want to express appreciation to the team. It is important who you have on your team to make sure the results are being driven. So thank you, Ms. Ingram, and all from accounting.
Thank you. Good evening again, school board members. Dr. Boone, I'm gonna read for you briefly the financial report for our fourth, fifth accounting period that ended November 30th, 2018. Revenue received as of November 30th is $115,605,140, or 35.1% of the total budget. This compares to 35% for the same time period in fiscal year 2018, and 40.2% in fiscal year 17. On the expenditure side, at the same time period, expenditures and encumbrances totaled $109,989,988, or 33.4% of our budget. This compares to 34.3% for the same time period in fiscal year 2018, and 35% in fiscal year 2017. We had one budget transfer that was greater than $50,000, and that is included on your, in your packet with the explanation of that one. And the next report is just a different way of presenting the financials in different categories. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much, Ms. Ingram.
Thank you.
Then let me go ahead and ask for a motion on the floor to approve the monthly financial report as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve the monthly financial report as presented. Second.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, when we were dealing with the consent agenda, I think I misunderstood what we were doing. I thought we were still taking two votes.
We, we are. I'm, I'm gonna get to that.
Oh, we are still another one.
We are, we're still gonna do that.
Okay, thank you.
I was mistaken also.
Oh, okay. We're gonna move on to the legislative priorities, and so I would like to turn it over to Ms. Martin to tee that up for us.
Okay. So Norfolk, the school board has been working with our, our consultants that through, sorry, I'm sorry, anyway, words together, through the Virginia School Board Association to put together our, our recommendations to the, our legislators for the upcoming session, our state legislators. And some of the things that have, we've met several times, well, let me go back and name, Carlos Clanton and I are both the legislative policy liaisons for the board, and so we've been working with Jana, yeah, Avantix, Jana Kasabun, and Ron Jordan on articulating what, what our legislative agenda recommendations are. And we did, we've also spoken with several of our legislators, particularly had the opportunity at the Bring Your Legislator to School Day on November 20th, which was a wonderful, wonderful event that you saw in the superintendent's report. Would you like me to go over them?
Only just to say that we've had a lot of feedback from the board members, and that you all have gotten back to everyone about, with the revised priorities that we have now. Do you wanna talk about the event that's gonna be happening in January where we go and visit them?
Yes, it's, what day, I'm sorry, I can't, I don't remember the day. We're gonna go, we're gonna go visit our legislators in Richmond and hopefully have the opportunity to talk with them some more in person about what policy and regulatory recommendations we have to help Norfolk Public Schools operate the best that we can operate, and to do what's best for our children. I'll just go over quickly, some of the themes to what we're requesting are to have more, more local autonomy in their decision-making for our schools, that, you know, we know best what, what's best for our district, and also to discourage any unfunded mandates from the state. So if it's important to recommend, then it's important enough to fund. So that's really what you'll, what you'll find, and of course, this is available on our board docs site.
So the Capitol Conference, which is January 14th, 15th, which is, I believe, the, the conference that you're referencing, we have typically, in the past, we've had scheduled appointments with our legislators. Do we have, since that's, you know, once we come back from break, it's two weeks, do we have a tentative schedule?
I've spoken to Jana, and she's gonna put that together, but I haven't received it yet, so I can follow up with that.
Okay, and do we know how many board members are able to go, and we might?
Oh, do you have it?
There, I would say there's probably four or five board members will be attending.
Okay. Great. Any other questions or comments on the legislative priorities?
I just make one more comment. There is one item that I just wanna pull out and say that it's, it's in reference to what's commonly known as the Tim Tebow Bill, and it is that non-public school students, we oppose non-public school students participating in VHSL activities. Again, this is what the board believes is best for our school system, but at our, when we discussed this with our legislators that attended the Bring Your Legislator to School Day, I really, well, Senator Lewis spoke up, and it really resonated with me, what he said was that while he agrees in the opposition of this policy, he does support the autonomy at the local level, which is in line, like I said, with what we're recommending, recommending on pretty much everything else. And so I agree with him in that respect, you know, so I just, if you go through this and read, read this, just, you know, just wanna make note of it, that this is how we feel here in Norfolk, but, but that discussion did happen, again, that we don't believe that we should be speaking for every other school district in the state.
Thank you for your work on putting these together, and thank you to all the board members for providing their feedback on really personalizing these priorities, so that when the education associations that spoke earlier today are up in Richmond lobbying on, on everyone's behalf, we will be with them, explaining to them why it is so important to have such commitment to education, as we know they will get the most return on their investment if they do invest in education. So that being said, is there a motion on the floor to approve the legislative priorities?
I move that we approve the legislative priorities.
Thank you.
Second.
Second?
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Next item on the agenda, approval of policies KGbz and KGCz. Ms. Bassin and Ms. Martin, you all serve on the policy committee. We've heard from Zarian and Zariel regarding these policies. Is there anything else further that you'd like to share with the board?
Lastly, I wanna thank, a huge thank you to you both, and Ms. Tillman, who's been working with, with us in the division for, over the last year, to make, to put our division in that 38, number of divisions in the state that have a comprehensive tobacco policy. And I think it's amazing that students are taking a hold of improved learning environments and healthy learning environments, so I thank you for that. I don't know if Ms. Martin has anything else to add to that?
No, I echo your, your words about, it's just wonderful that when we have young people who can't even vote yet, that are already appreciating civic engagement, so thank you.
So, with that, I wanna make a motion that we adopt policies, oh my gosh, KGbz and KGCz. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Aye. Congratulations, girls.
All right, so the next item that we have on our agenda is really to cover the item that was pulled off of the consent agenda. So we had some discussion early on in our closed session, and the board felt best that it was important to take these items off of the consent agenda and to vote on them separately. So we are gonna be taking a vote right now that will ask for a postponement until the January 9th meeting that we have, to vote on two personnel items. So with that, I would like to ask if there is a motion on the floor for that postponement to the January 9th meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to postpone this vote until our next meeting to allow members a little more time for information gathering, thought, and discussion to build consensus before we vote.
On the floor, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Butts, if you could call the roll.
Ms. Bassin?
Nay.
Ms. Campson?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Nay.
Excuse me. Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
So we have a, an item here that there is a 3-3 vote. That being said, we will now go on to vote on the actual item, since that motion did not carry. So the motion that I would need on the floor is a motion to approve the two items on the personnel docket. And Mr. Cloud, if there is anything extra that I needed to add to that, please let me know.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
I'd like to move that we approve the superintendent's recommendation for the two positions.
I second that motion.
Ms. Bassin?
Aye.
Ms. Campson?
I am sorry that, and disappointed that I am being forced to vote this early on a item that I'm not ready to vote on.
salaries, um, and I, and a few other concerns of information that certain board members wanted. So unfortunately and regurgitably, I must vote no.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Jordan?
Aye.
Dr. Gabriel?
Nay.
So we have four aye and two nay, the motion passes and the positions are approved. Am I correct?
Yes.
Very good. Um, moving on to, uh, matters of the board, um, are there any board members that have any items that they would like to bring up for discussion?
Um, as we've just had conversation, you know, about the audit of these two programs, I know we've, uh, received, I guess I'm wondering when we might expect a report on the dissolution of the Norfolk Education Foundation and, uh, this dispersment of funds, which I know we received that information, but, um, I had asked earlier in November about, um, a deeper report on that.
It, it's my understanding and Mr. Cloud is here that there are still some legal items that are, um, being worked out with that process and certainly happy to have a report to that, to the board, um, after I've discussed it with him and with, uh, the attorneys that we have. But the board itself has, uh, taken a vote to, uh, you know, not engage, uh, in this discussion anymore. So I think that the funds and how the funds are being dispersed, we can get that information to you. I don't see a problem with that.
I think they have not, they have, has dissolved, they have not filed their, not.
Any other items?
For, uh, matter of the board or on that matter?
Or?
Yeah, I have something.
Okay.
Um, I'd just like to take a moment, um, December, uh, twenty eighteen is the, uh, three-year anniversary of, uh, Dr. Boone being hired as, uh, superintendent. And, uh, I wanted to take a moment to, uh, congratulate her on, uh, on that anniversary. Uh, based upon my research, I don't think Norfolk Public Schools has had a superintendent to serve three years in almost a decade. And, um, and over that same period of time, I don't think we've had a school board that served together, uh, for three years, um, over that, over that same decade. And while, uh, Dr. Boone, uh, last December, when, uh, the board voted, we did not have a unanimous vote on the day that we selected you as our superintendent. We did have a unanimous board and governance team committed to, uh, the work of governance and excellence and working together as a team for the benefit of our school division. But I just jotted down some items that, uh, that I think warrants, uh, attention on, uh, Dr. Boone's, uh, three-year anniversary, just in terms of some items that, uh, she and her team have accomplished in that short three-year period. Let there be no mistake about it, we are seeing student achievement growth in this division. And if you like to go back and compare the data from where it was when Dr. Boone came in and where we are today, you will see that growth. Uh, we've celebrated excellent graduation class scholarship totals at each of our graduations. We've seen the advancement of our C T E high school work. If you had the opportunity to watch the city council meeting yesterday, you could see, uh, Dr. Boone and her team, uh, advancing and discussing that work. The strategic gears, the theory of action, uh, that she has brought to the division has put the division on the same page. Uh, wasn't too long ago that the Council of Great City Schools often said that Norfolk Public Schools was a, uh, system of schools rather than being a school system. And her theory of action has helped to bring us back towards being a school system. Uh, you heard from Teachers Association earlier, earlier. Uh, before Dr. Boone came in, we had, um, uh, concerns and issues around the M O U and relationship with our Teachers Association. She renewed and strengthened that relationship. She brought in focused schools. We had many turnaround partners. Uh, if you did an evaluation of the turnaround partners, we didn't know who was where and what was happening and what results were getting done. She brought in a organization, uh, that according to looking at all the tweets that I see from, uh, principals around the division, seemed to have resonated with our school division and brought a focus to our school improvement, not just for those that are in school improvement, but for the division as a whole. She has supported the school board's accountability plan. Uh, we used to have custodians line up at this podium, uh, week, month after month, uh, asking for, uh, changes in how, uh, custodians were managed. I think she took care of that in the first sixty days. We had bus drivers that used to come and talk about work conditions and pay. She took care of that. We had teachers who would always come and principals and others and other staff and address the fact that they weren't on the appropriate, uh, step or pay scale or needed more compensation. Uh, Dr. Boone and her team, uh, brought us a pay and compensation study. We are two, uh, phases in and she did that with excellence. Uh, the board asked her to look at alternative ed. She addressed that. She brought in zero-based budgeting. She updated the website as we had asked. We spent earlier today talking about educational planning, updated facilities and facilities conditions assessment. Uh, for years after an M G T report, things just kinda set and they were disorganized. Dr. Boone and her team have brought that together. Uh, we've had years been talking about what do we do about our funding of our schools? Dr. Boone, working with, uh, uh, city manager and the mayor in this, in the school board, uh, brought about a funding formula development. Still needs to be worked, but we have a funding formula in Norfolk where for years we did not. She supported the board's wellness policy. We heard today about, uh, uh, later start times, where we were able to, uh, address many things, including recess around our wellness policy. She supported the board's suicide prevention policy. Uh, many superintendents, if you look around, they come in and they make all these changes around their leadership staff. Dr. Boone didn't do that. Dr. Boone took the staff that was here. She made some key additional, uh, placements. But she built a team together, both building upon the strength from what she inherited and then coaching up, uh, that team with what she recruited. And we have a excellent, strong team that's working together. She supported the, uh, effort around our, uh, youth school board member. So we've had, uh, I think this is the third year of, uh, youth school board member. The board passed that policy. Dr. Boone took it on right away and we have had excellent school board, youth school board members to, uh, to serve. We've had a grea- increased funding support from city council on behalf of citizens each year that Dr. Boone has put forward a budget. Uh, people talk about restorative justice. She has restorative justice work underway right now. The music that we heard earlier today, that came from, uh, Dr. Boone's, uh, Trauma Informed Care Pilot. We were so impressed, uh, last year with what we heard with that Trauma Informed Care Pilot that the board agreed to bring music to our, uh, uh, meetings, one to showcase the talent of our youth, but also try to help with our own trauma that we deal with sometimes as board members. We've had new schools that were open. Prior to Dr. Boone, we had the P P E A. One of the complaints about the P P E A was we built the school, but we didn't have the educational programming, so the education drove the school construction versus the school construction driving the education. Dr. Boone has found a way nevertheless to take, uh, the schools that we've had and still have, uh, education drive that. And even as we have a new school that's coming on board, she and her team continue to work. Um, transition to a fully elected school board. So not only is Dr. Boone the first woman superintendent in the history of Norfolk Public Schools, but she also took that on in the middle of, uh, this school board transitioning from an appointed school board to an elected school board. She's worked with two mayors, two city managers, two s- school board chairs, two school boards with less than three years' experience on average, yet the work of the district continues to advance. Uh, we just heard from our auditors in terms of, uh, uh, no findings, uh, district rising from grant management issues. We no longer rely on one-time funds with our budget. At one time, uh, we would constantly hear from, uh, V D O E and the state. They were in this district micromanaging that maybe many don't really appreciate, but we don't have those, uh, those concerns anymore. We asked for mixed income pre-K. She has made mixed income pre-K, uh, come about. So those are just something. I could talk about special review. I could talk, talk about her support of the Apple Day Mac program. I could talk about the school capital fund at Lambert's Point that, uh, she's helping to support with the, with the city. So there are more and more and more great things that have happened in just a short three years. And, um, I was with the, some super, aspiring superintendents this past Saturday as part of, uh, Academy. I think for the last four years, I've gone and spoken to those aspiring superintendents. And part of what they talked about was their fear of, uh, if I take on a job in an urban division, will I have support? Will I last? What will happen with my, my career? And I'm just appreciative that, uh, Dr. Boone in her three years has come back home, uh, has taken on the task, uh, has worked through some challenges. Everything has not been perfect, uh, but nevertheless, she has done great work and I think we should appreciate and honor her, uh, even though she's a Patriots fan. I will forgive her that. But in the spirit of, uh, Patriots, I think she is the Bill Belichick of superintendents. And so I just want to acknowledge her on her three-year anniversary as a superintendent of Norfolk Public Schools. Thank you.
Surprised and shocked by that, um, matter of the board. It, it is an honor to serve Norfolk Public Schools. I don't do it alone. I do it because of the dedication of the staff who choose to work in Norfolk Public Schools. I do it on behalf of the students who expect the best from us and trust us each and every day to do what's right by them. And I do it because of the parents who send us their best and brightest and trust us each and every day to make strides and to make progress. Are we there yet? No, we aren't. But as I said to some people recently, we're rising and we will continue to rise. How often I, I look at the media being in attendance and, and laugh because when I was away for those six and a half years, every day I looked to see what was the headline. One of my commitments to the school board and to the community was that we would operate in a way where we would no longer be the punching bag and the, the fuel for today's headlines. And so I'm very proud of the fact of many of the positive headlines that have come about with this work. My greatest joy is working with the leadership, developing student and staff leadership, and most importantly, working with the children. So thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, um, I just have one comment. I'd like to say thank you to Mrs. Barkalos and Ms. Woolwines, four-year-old club, class at Ocean Air Elementary School for the lovely, creative, and thoughtful Christmas cards that they gave to all of the school board members.
Um, I just wanna mention something that Tanya and I participated in this past weekend. It was the, um, Operation Toy Drop where we, um, were able to provide, I say we, it was a huge team. It was much more than the two of, bigger than two of us. Um, we spent all of Saturday afternoon, um, allowing children and families, um, who cannot provide for themselves. They were identified, um, they had a military connection or, um, were from Title I schools, uh, that came in the doors and were able to pick up a toy for themselves. And, um, these families, nearly two thousand families stood in line for several hours in the rain on Saturday afternoon, and you would have never known it when they walked through that door. Um, it was very touching, um, everyone was in great spirits. Um, it was just a really wonderful program and I was really happy to be a part of that.
I echo that. That was, um, and not just one toy, many toys. And they, shopping for family members and just that opportunity and that partnership, uh, with Walmart, the city, um, and I know I, and the police department was the, was the big one. So, um, I appreciated getting to be a part of that, so.
I just wanted to, um, extend my sincere thanks to our music and art departments. I know that December is a very busy time for them. Uh, was able to participate with, uh, many board members in going to see some of the very beautiful comical and, um, resourcefully used, uh, music programs and art programs that we have in our school division. Uh, so impressed with, uh, the parents who came out to support their students, uh, with the teachers that are putting on multiple programs, but certainly the ones who are, um, directing and going from building to building to make sure that the programs and the displays and everything are on point for our students. It's a real point of engagement for families and it's an opportunity for them to see the great things that do happen in N P S. And, uh, a lot of schools now are piggybacking school performances with P T A meetings because we know that we are all so busy. So I really applaud the staff of the buildings, uh, for extending their hours during the holidays in order to accommodate that. And on behalf of the board, I wanted to thank the administration for all of the hours, uh, many, many hours that you all put in, um, to bring about the reports and the items so that we can be, uh, informed. I wanted to wish you all happy holidays, happy new year. Please enjoy this time with your loved ones. Uh, th- those moments that you have with them are so important. So, uh, we hope that you're not going to be taking, uh, work home over the holidays. But, uh, we, we do sincerely thank you for that and enjoy your time with your loved ones. Be safe if you're traveling and we wish you a very happy new year. That being said, the meeting's adjourned.